Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. It's a beautiful day and we appreciate the adverse weather we've been having. It's come our way this time. Thank you very much for that. Be with this council today and help them make decisions that will help our people and help all our people. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Chuck Duskin Jr., David Walkenstip, Jewel England, Matt Baker, Bill Burr, Julia Coates, Jody Fishinghoff, Meredith Fraley, Janell Fulbright, Don Garvin, Becky Parkes, China Glory Jordan, Lee Keener, Dick Lee, Curtis Snell, David Thornton, Karen Callan.
(inaudible).
All right. Three items on our agenda, councilors. Item number one relates to the agreement with the Delaware. Madam Speaker, would you please?
Yes, this is a resolution ratifying implementation agreement, number one, implementing the 2008 memorandum of agreement as to tribal priority allocation funds for aid to tribal government between the Cherokee Nation and the Delaware Tribe of Indians. I would put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second, Councilor Conwatz. Tammy, I see you risen to give us a summary of the issue and what this change will be.
Well, primarily, I'm here to answer or attempt to answer any questions you may have, but if you all will remember, we brief you on this from time to time over the last few months, basically about the last year, I guess, that we had received a letter notifying the nation from the Solicitor's Office with the Department of Interior that we needed to basically change the way the funds are being passed through the nation to the Delaware, that they were basically getting the benefit of a self-governance tribe when in fact they were not. So, we'd been operating under that agreement since, I think we had transferred funds back in 2006 or so, and it was in our 2008 agreement that it was what's known as base transferred. So, basically, this is giving us authority to reverse that base transfer and allow an agreement with the Delaware that they would do what's known as a 638 contract directly with BIA for those funds. We're backing out the exact amount of the transfer that was made to the nation. That exact amount is what's coming back out. So, I can answer any questions you may have. I know that the Attorney General's Office had drafted and been closely involved in this process, so.
Any questions, Councilor Conwatz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, essentially, this is the same except for indirect cost.
Yes. The amount that we're pulling out is just the base funds, not contract support or indirect cost on top of that. The way that that will work is they will get that directly through their 638 contract. In other words, the way that the nation received the contract support was their funds were in our base and in our calculation. Once that's pulled out, we will no longer receive those funds, so there wouldn't be anything for us to transfer with indirect.
So, the only difference is that they'll just be directly funded?
Yes. And whatever they work out with the BIA is between them and the BIA, and whatever their indirect is, is based upon their indirect cost rate as approved by the National Business Center.
But all the non-compete clauses and all those things in the agreement and how we serve their citizens at times, that's all the same?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And they're fully in support and have already endorsed this, or Delaware side?
I cannot speak on their behalf, but the Attorney General's Office has been working with them, and that's my understanding.
I know Councilman Young from the Delaware Tribe of Indians is here today. I don't know if he wanted to share anything, or?
I'm sorry. On this issue or on time now?
This issue.
No, on this issue.
She's pretty well, Vicky, has signed up, and I think after it's passed, then it'll be submitted to our council. Truthfully, I don't know how they're going to go along.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. But you guys have been consulted and all that's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Young. Thank you, Vicky. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Thornton?
Yes, Vicky, how long have these funds been going through Cherokee Nation?
Well, once they lost the recognition, and I want to say it was 2006 was the first time that the funds came through to us. I'd have to look that up specifically, but I believe it was 2006. It was in 2008, if I remember correctly, that it was what's known as base transferred to the nation. So, these are some of the first funds that came from the Delaware, or came from the allocation for the Delaware that was passed through the nation to them. So, as soon as those funds came in, they were transferred. And I believe it was in 2006.
Why? Why did this happen? How come they started having to transfer the funds through the nation?
Well, they lost federal recognition, so they were no longer eligible to receive those funds. And the best way that I can describe that, and I don't know if, looking for Todd, but the best way I can describe that is that the outcome of the suit was that the Delaware had, let me see what the term here is. Looking for the history of the suit. Here it is. "The BIA's decision in 1996 to federally recognize the Delaware was unlawful and that the Delaware Tribe had, under the 1867 agreement, relinquished its separate tribal sovereignty and was consolidated and merged into the Cherokee Nation." So, whatever it was determined at that time, whatever funding was for, or set aside for them, would come through the nation.
Then they've turned around and they've recognized the Delaware, then?
Yes. And the nation worked with the Delaware to reestablish their recognition. But it's pursuant to the agreement between the nation and the Delaware.
Does this bring about property and trust?
Pardon me?
Would this bring about property and trust for the Delaware?
No.
We've got another federally recognized tribe here in this nation that's trying to get property and trust right now. But I've got a feeling that this actually stems back from old treaties of when Cherokee Nation came in here. Delaware didn't have anywhere to go, so they ended up putting them in here with Cherokee Nation, and that's where I think it's at. And I don't think the BIA or the Department of Interior really has the right to force us to give any funding to anyone that wouldn't come through us as a nation. And I know that we have lawyers here that can turn and twist things around, but I do believe that they can unless they come through the nation. That's the reason you're up here right now, is to try to get this brought, not going through the Cherokee Nation, but to the Delaware. But anyway, thank you very much.
I would like to point out in the resolution that it states, "The 2008 memorandum of agreement maintains the integrity of the Cherokee Nation's jurisdiction and territory within the historic boundaries of the Cherokee Nation."
Well, it does until it's filed and took court case, and the BIA or Department of Interior says otherwise, and then we've got to fight things. So, okay.
Ms. Parker-Herald, did you have a response to Councilor Thornton?
Just one thing, if they don't have federal recognition, they can't take land into trust, and if one just stepped up, they do have the kind that would allow them to place land into trust at the partnership.
In our jurisdiction. In our jurisdiction, that's right.
They're recognized as recognized tribes.
And this legislation, this will not modify the agreement, the MO, memorandum of agreement that we had with this, the 638 funding for self-governance. But it won't modify any current situation that we have with them at all.
Councilor Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Vicky, was this at the Delaware Tribal Request to us to amend this, the MOA?
Actually, no, sir, it wasn't. It was based upon a letter from the Department of Interior. And this letter has been provided to you in the past. I have a copy with me today, and I'd be happy to provide it to you again, but, I mean, it's been some time ago since I gave it to you. But it's from July 23, 2012. "The Solicitor's Office has expressed some concerns about the present method of including Department of Interior funds intended for the Delaware Tribe of the Cherokee Nation's MFA. At this time, the following concerns are limited to BIA funding provided for the use, support, and functions of the Delaware Tribal Government itself, as opposed to funding provided for the provision of services to individual Indians within the Cherokee Nation's service area." And these are their concerns. One, the Delaware Tribe is not yet qualified to participate in tribal self-governance under Title IV of the Indian Self-Determination Act. And it goes on to describe some other things. "Nothing in the Cherokee Nation Compact or Funding Agreement authorizes the nation to expend funds provided under its compact to perform tribal government functions on behalf of another tribe," and it goes further into that concern that they have.
Has the Delaware Council itself approved this yet, or?
Not yet.
First up, or what?
We're first up.
We're first in rotation?
Yes.
Do we know that the Delaware Tribe and Council want to do this, Nate? Or, I'm seeing two people here.
I'm just one of seven, and I truly missed the last meeting, so I'm a little out of the loop, and plus, I'm not even miles away. I'm here, so I don't know, but gut feeling is probably yes.
I will say that they have submitted a 638 contract and have that in the process at the BIA, so that they are covered should all of this pass come October 1, that they will have a 638 contract in place.
Well, I guess one of my concerns is, are we putting cart before the horse? It seems like the Delaware Tribe should vote on this first and then come to us. Is that not correct, or am I out of line on that?
I would defer to the AG's office on that. I don't know that it matters one way or the other, whether it's here or it comes to...
Is the AG's office here today?
I'm here for Mr. Henry today, and I would agree. I don't think that, I haven't worked on this issue, so I don't know a lot about it, but I would agree, it probably doesn't matter whether Cherokee Nation takes it first or the Delaware Tribe takes it up first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Burr?
I just had one comment. I happened to be in Deputy Chief's office one day, and the tribe, the Delaware Tribe, had not received their appropriated amount, and we hadn't done the paperwork here at the tribe. So, I think, you know, it's a minimum amount, I think, what, at that time, $308,000, it was like a $300,000 check. We're not taking any funds from the Cherokees, it's just they pass through. We're just another agency that distributes the funds to the tribe that's rightfully theirs, correct?
Right.
Okay. And it's not, we're not relinquishing anything as part of our sovereignty rights as a tribe. We're not giving up anything there.
No.
It just, instead of the money coming to us, and we go through our bureaucracy to get the check to them, it'll go straight to the tribe?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is also, again, not to provide, this particular funding is not to provide services, it is for the operations of their government, so their tribal complex, if you will.
Is this time-consuming for our accounting department to process this?
Pardon me?
Is this time-consuming? How many man-hours it take to process this? Is it something that we would rather not do?
Well, actually, I'm the one that has to do the calculation, and?
Yes.
Yes, I would rather not have to do that.
Okay.
But it's not like a huge time-consuming thing, but...
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor.
And again, if we were funded all up front, instead of getting continuing resolutions and piecemeal funding, it would be real easy to just, you know, we get paid, we turn around and give it to them, but when we get continuing resolutions that are sporadic throughout the year, you know, we don't pass through to them funds that we haven't received, so we have to calculate that as it comes through, but...
Councilor Keener?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vicky, is there anyone here to speak on the behalf of Chief Pachonek? You know, you know how many times that Chief Pachonek has met with our administration?
On this particular matter?
Yes.
Um... Two, or, well, the actual chief, twice, I think, that I'm aware of. I'd have to go back and see. I mean, quote me on that, but I think...
And their administration and our administration and Attorney Generals have all met and hammered this out, correct?
We've had discussions about it, yes. And the actual agreement, the AG's office is taking the lead on that and negotiating that with the Delaware, but we've all been involved with looking that over and coming up with language.
So, we're going to approve it, or approve or disapprove in our council, and then Mr. Young and the council will approve?
Yes.
And the chiefs will sign?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So, I want to be fully confident that...
And if I misquote anything, anyone is welcome to correct me, but that's my understanding.
Okay. And I want to be fully confident that the Delaware Tribe is, they have the mechanism in place to implement this. And you have that confidence?
That's an assumption.
Well, I don't think that's for me to say, whether it's like their tribal operations or, I don't want to...
Okay. Well, we're going to turn this over to them, is what I'm saying, right?
Mm-hmm.
$250,000, something like that? So, and are we just going to leave them out there in the lurch for them to work with the government to get that? Are we still going to be able to help them? If they need help? I'm not making disparaging remarks against the Delaware, but if this is going to be new to them, so...
Well, I can only speak for myself, and I've tried to be as helpful or provide as much assistance or whatever to them as I can. This will be a 638 contract, so their agreement will be directly with the BIA, with a contract. And the BIA has resources available to assist them, and, you know, should they have any questions, there's contracting officers and people at the regional office to also assist them in what they need, should they require it.
The BIA will treat them the same as they have treated us? Okay. Yeah, no comment on that. But, okay, so I guess it's kind of up to us in it to get the ball rolling, this council? That's what I'm hearing.
Yes. And I, there is some time elements involved. In other words, they have started the 638 contract process. As part of that, the BIA, my understanding is they're waiting on a resolution from the tribes in order to move forward with that 638 contract. As part of our negotiations for our funding agreement, it ends September 30. Should this not pass, I have worked with the Self-Governance Office to set up alternative language should we need to, and, you know, I always have a Plan B, or C, or D. But anyway, we've already discussed, you know, the Solicitor's opinion is that we should not be passing through those funds through our agreement. If that's their legal opinion, then we would want not to do anything that would, and I've not been told otherwise, that, you know, we would fight that legal opinion, or that we disagree with that legal opinion. Again, that would be up to the AG's office to deal with that. But, you know, if we're not going to challenge that legal opinion, then we need to be prepared to not pass through those funds through our agreement. And so, I've made provisions to try to deal with that, should this not pass as well.
Thank you, Vicky.
Just so that I have the nation protected and that we can continue to get paid come October 1 and not delay in any way our funding. That's my intent. Whether I'm able to get that accomplished or not is another thing, but that's my intent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Keener. Councilor Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not long after I first came in, I think David Sutherland, and I don't know what fund it was, I recall, took back some funds from the Delaware Tribe temporarily. Have those funds now been sent back out?
That would be Recovery Act funds, that they were not going to be able to spend timely. And what they did is exchange Recovery Act dollars for regular Nahaza dollars. And so, the nation went ahead and expended those Recovery Act dollars in order to meet the deadline. As to whether or not they have expended those additional funds at the Delaware, that I don't have the status of that.
So, but this funding group we're talking about here, is it everything that we pass through?
No. This is just...
So, this is just one item?
Just one small piece.
Do you recommend it still?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anything further, Councilor?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Coats?
Thank you. I support this because I think that 638 contracting is something that all tribes should be doing to the greatest extent that they possibly can, and so for the Delaware Nation to be doing this at this time, I think is, you know, to begin that process is extremely beneficial for them in their development to regain the fullest amount of sovereignty that was basically taken from them in 1867. I also think that this is something that we should do because for an Indian nation to have another Indian nation sort of as an overseer of it is anathema to any of us to be in that kind of situation. It certainly is if we're the overseen, but I would hope that we would also feel that way as the overseer, that this is not appropriate for us to be doing. This is a function of the Bureau and part of their relationship and the federal relationship with the Delaware Nation, with the Delaware Tribe, and so I can't see any reasonable reason why we should be continuing to do this and acting in this capacity when it is federal funding. It's not our funding that's involved here. So, just for those reasons, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coats. Any further questions, comments? This is a resolution. We have a second. We have a second, don't we? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same side.
Not this, not this, yes.
Item number two, relating to impacting vehicle tags in the jurisdiction. Madam Speaker, would you introduce that?
Yes, it is a legislative act relating to and improving a compact with the State of Oklahoma, to be known as the Cherokee Nation/State of Oklahoma in Jurisdiction Motor Vehicle Licensing Act, I believe was item number two, and I would put that in form of a motion.
Moving to the second. Attorney General's Office, who can give us a summary of this particular compact?
I'm sorry that the A-Team cannot be here today. Mr. Henry is tied up at court this morning. He anticipated being here, but I've worked on this, and I should be able to answer your questions. We also have the Tax Commission here, Sharon Webster, here. You have a PowerPoint in front of you, and I think it might be easiest to try to go through this with the PowerPoint. Basically, what we have here is replacing the old motor vehicle compact will be two new compacts. One will issue, will issue in-jurisdiction tags under that compact, and there's a second compact under which we will issue at-large tags. The basic, trying to just break down the basics of it, under the in-jurisdiction, the rates for tags will not change. So, if you live inside the 14-county area and you receive tags at a certain rate, that rate will continue for you. And so, if you have any citizen who has a current Cherokee Nation tag is not going to see an increase in price so long as they continue to live inside what we're calling the compact jurisdiction. That jurisdiction will change, though. There's a map on the next page, I believe, that will show the jurisdiction, compact jurisdiction change. Under the at-large compact, the rate for tags will be the same under tribal as it is under the state, so you'll pay the state rate for a tag under the at-large compact. But the nation has the opportunity to provide a small instant rebate to our citizens, but that's not something that the AG's office can decide to do. That's something that the Tax Commission, in cooperation with this body, will have to do. But we have anticipated allowing our citizens to have a rebate on those at-large compact or tags. For both compacts, they're going to run for a term of 10 years, and they're going to, it includes provisions for unilateral withdrawal, so either party can withdraw from the compact at any time during that 10-year period. It also includes a waiver of sovereign immunity under both compacts, because during the course of that 10 years, there will always be times when the nation owes money to state programs, to schools, or to roads, and there will be times when the nation, when the state is going to owe the nation money under the at-large compact, so there has to be some method for us to get any money that's due in owing us under the compact. So, there is a waiver of sovereign immunity, but that will be in the federal court in the Northern District, and it'll be only limited, the only suit that could be brought under the compact would be by the other party, so no third parties could sue us. It would just be for damages under that compact by the party. So, the next slide shows the map, the compact jurisdiction map, and on the left, you see the, you know, the normal 14-county map. And under the right is what is defined as compact jurisdiction under both compacts, and it's going to include all of Tulsa, Waggoner, Mays, Rogers, and Muskogee Counties. And if you live in one of these counties, if you live in this compact jurisdiction, you're going to get the rate that Cherokee citizens ordinarily get who live in the 14 counties. So, if you live outside the 14-county boundary but inside Tulsa County, you'll get the same rate as a citizen who lived inside the compact, the Cherokee Nation 14-county jurisdiction. For all the people who live outside of those boundaries in the State of Oklahoma, you're going to get the out-of-district rate, which is going to be the full state rate for your tribal tag. Then there's another, a bigger map of it on the next page, just so you can sort of On the in-jurisdiction compact, 100% of the revenue that's generated is going to stay in the Cherokee Nation. Under the in-jurisdiction compact, you're going to be able to distribute money to schools and to law enforcement and to roads the way that the nation has always done. But this will actually extend that so that schools in Tulsa County and Muskogee County, Rogers and Mays will be able to... Rogers and Mays will be able to also get money for their roads and their schools. The idea is to distribute that money to the entirety of the county that's in the compact jurisdiction. This is kind of confusing, so hopefully this is breaking it down a little bit for you. But it does not anticipate giving money to schools and to counties and to, um, to roads on the out-of-jurisdiction compact. So Oklahoma County is not going to get money for schools and roads under this because there just is not enough left on the table for the nation at the end of the day under that compact to do that. So on the at-large compact, which is the next page, you see here, this is a provision of state law which sets aside a certain amount of funding to go into their general fund. And this is the funding that the nation and the state will be splitting, 65-35, with 65% of that funding going to the state of Oklahoma and 35% of that being remitted back to the nation. So it's not 35% of the money collected, it's 35% of the amount that's otherwise tagged for the general fund, which at this point in time is 26.84% of the revenue collected. So how this additional revenue that's brought in, this 35%, is going to be up to this council. That money is not earmarked for schools or for roads or for anything in particular, but this body will be able to determine how that revenue is spent. Implementation of the, uh, because this is an entirely new process, selling tags to the, the at-large tags, it's going to be an entirely new process. So, um, the plan is, and the tax, Sharon can speak about this more, but the plan is to begin selling at-large jurisdiction tags in June of 2014. And the Tax Commission is going to make every effort to move that up if it's possible, but she wanted to give you a realistic deadline for when sales under the at-large compact would begin. And I think she said it could take up to nine months to implement that. Require an increased staff of 13 to 20 additional people and a possible need for a satellite office in the Tulsa metro area because we anticipate a lot of, of transactions in that area. So that's the basics of the two motor vehicle compacts that you're going to have in front of you. I know there's probably a lot of questions.
Well, first of all, very impressive and exciting that we're going to be able to sell tags all over the state of Oklahoma. And I appreciate that Attorney General's office and Tax Commission, whoever else was involved. This is a huge shift in our ability to get revenues and sell tags to our people. I know there are a lot of questions, Councilman G.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if it's too late to fix this, um, and I have a number of questions, but it shouldn't say enrolled member, it should say enrolled citizen, right?
Right. And citizen and enrolled member, I think, are defined basically to be the same word, but if there's a, what, where are you looking at?
All throughout the compact. Because I know we have a law on books that says we shouldn't refer to us as members like of a club, we're citizens.
Right. Um, I, I can certainly see if that's something we could do. We could get, we could state about that. I mean, I think for, I don't think it would have a legal effect, but I understand what you're saying from a practical effect, referring the word citizen to member, and I will, um, I'm sorry that that happened, and I'll see what I can do about that.
That would be great. So, um, other than the change in jurisdiction, the primary compact for the 14 county jurisdiction is the same?
Right.
So why, why, okay, so I'm excited that we're including these other contiguous counties so that we can get away from the border people that are always frustrated that they didn't understand whether they are or not in the Cherokee Nation.
Right.
But we didn't include border, uh, counties such as McIntosh, Ottawa, and Delaware. We didn't remedy or those situations. Is there a reason why?
It was just part of the negotiating process. Um, you know, certainly our preference would have been to include any of those counties, but it just, there's a certain amount of give and take, uh, that had to, had to be part of the process. And so we were able to get those counties that, um, we felt like it was a great victory to get Tulsa, Muskogee, Wagner, Mays, and Rogers included in that. Um, it was not a total victory, but it was certainly a victory that we were able to get those in there. So other than that, I don't have a better explanation, it was just part of the process.
Okay, and if I understood the presentation correctly and what I've read, they will, I mean, I guess the border schools already get MFT money for the kids, but not the police departments. So how are we going to, how will that actually be implemented?
The schools, my understanding is the way they calculate is if any part of that school district was in jurisdictional areas, then that school was included. So there are schools in Tulsa County and Muskogee County that didn't get some funding because they were further into the county. So this will include all of that.
So under this, if they are in the car tag compact jurisdiction, all are part, then they will suddenly be opened up to this money?
Yep. I mean, yeah.
The Muskogee, Tulsa, Wagner County.
So like, for example, if I read the map correctly, Sand Springs will now get money for their school?
Yes.
And Berry Hill and Jinks?
Yes.
Okay. But that'll be based on actual Cherokee citizenship population?
The same calculation that they currently use.
And the effective date is September 30th? Is that correct? Or no, 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 wait. It's September 1st of this year?
Right.
Okay, so, but it'll take nine months to implement?
For the out-of-jurisdiction, that'd be, for the in-jurisdiction part of it, we will be able to sell those once the law is updated to include, to permit the Tax Commission to do that. Because right now, the, the law reads that it references our 14 county jurisdictions. There may have to be some amendments to the law. Once those amendments are made, then people inside Tulsa, Wagner, and Muskogee should be able to get in-jurisdiction tags.
Because I know we already have concerns at Collinsville. Are you prepared for this, Sharon?
I'm working on it. We have, uh, two additional staff that have been hired and they've been, they started last week, they're training. I have one other that has been selected and I believe that person is supposed to start next week in training. So that will have four staff at the Collinsville office. And if you will look, I also said that, uh, there's a possibility that we're going to need to add another office in the Tulsa metro area.
The way I read the compact, we could only have physical tag offices in the jurisdiction?
Yes.
So we'll never have online registration?
That's a possibility that we're checking into. Okay, I've got the nine months out there to work on.
I couldn't determine by the compact language if that was precluded or not. That was, okay, so it's not precluded. What about the delivery of money and receipts? Are we prepared to do, there's some pretty serious timeframes with the kind of, because we're, it's a retail setting, right? So we've got to, are we prepared to do that?
I am visiting with the treasurer and we feel that we can get the bank accounts set up and everything that's due to be moved out.
Okay, and what happens if this, um, body and the chief all concur and we just rebate all 35% back to, it has to come out of our money, the compact's clear, but does that violate then the intent with the state? I wasn't there, so I'm trying to get a sense of what, because people are going to start asking questions, and I want to be prepared to answer them.
I mean, I think the, the rebate, I mean, would be an issue of, well, you know, what can, that's a fiscal issue more than, I don't think there's a compact issue if you want to rebate whatever portion of that back to the citizen, but that's going to have to come out of the nation's money. And we're only, if we're, I mean, that would be 35, we only, remember, we're only getting 35% of the part that goes into the general revenue funds. That would be 35% of the 25% that currently goes to the general revenue fund of Oklahoma. So we're only getting, we're not getting 35% of the cost of the tag. We're splitting the revenue that's going to the state under, into their general fund.
Okay, so we get reimbursed directly for the cost of the tag. That's still happening, right? And then the revenue generated, 65% goes back to the state and 35% is, stays with the tribe?
Right. But it's, so if you have the amount of the tag, say a tag of $100, we don't get 35% of the $100 that that tag costs. We would get, you would take 25% of that $100 and we would get 35% of that, of the 25% that goes to the general revenue fund.
Are we going to be able to, so we get 8.7% of the car tag?
Right.
Is this going to be financially worth our time? I mean, are we going to be recovering our cost?
We think this is a break-even point. This will be a break-even proposition on the out-of-district tags.
It's going to pay for that. Okay, so we, the likelihood that we'll be able to contribute to scholarships or anything else is about slim to none, it sounds like.
I mean, not out of the money that we're going to be receiving from the out-of-tag, out-of-district tags, the at-large tags. There, and that's why there's, you know, we wanted to make it clear that there's not going to be money under the at-large tags to give money back to schools and roads, because that money's already going to schools and roads under the state's formula. They have money that goes to those different entities, and we're not getting any portion of that that's going to continue to go to them under the state formula. So we're not, we're not going to be receiving enough to do that if this body is going to have the revenue from the Tulsa County, Wagner County, I mean, those, those monies are going to come into the nation before where they were going to the state. So that revenue will increase for the tribe, but the, this at-large sales are going to be at a break-even point.
Wow. Okay.
No, thank you, V.
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilor Fornright.
Yes, thank you. Do you have any idea is that a small rebate may be given to those outside the jurisdiction area? How much, why, why is it going to be lucrative for these people to want to buy these tags? Or is it just a matter of Cherokee pride and they'd like to have Cherokee tags?
That is a really good question. Um, it is, I think it's mostly going to be a issue of pride that you want to, your revenue, you want to have that tribal tag on your car, you want to show that you're a citizen of the nation. Um, I think that we had considered or figured in our calculations that we could, um, do like a 10% rebate, um, out of the money that we're going to collect at at-large and still hit that break-even point, um, when we were looking at, you know, how are the different ways? Because that's, that's not up to us in the end, it's up to you, but we were just trying to figure out the different ways that this might work. And that was a number that we had said and looked at, we thought this was feasible to do and still, you know, hit that break-even point for the car tag sales. That was our idea on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Walker, say.
Well, hey, I had a whole bunch of questions that Chuck answered up. I'm good, thank you.
Councilor Garvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is going to make my job 100% easier than it has been. People living on each side of this line in Muskogee County, it's been a fight for all my time, and I'm glad it's happening and it's going to be effective, uh, as soon as we get the paperwork everybody signs for those people in the yellow, Muskogee County.
In the lost, correct.
Yeah, we, we'll have to make a few changes to the law to permit the tag agency to sell tags, individuals. Well, we may need to make some other changes to tribal law, but I could see us being able to do that in 30, 60 days and all that.
The only thing is McIntosh County kind of got left out of the yellow.
I know, and I mean, that's just, it was just part of the, you know, not, not everybody was going to get everything they wanted at the end of the day, and that was just, it is unfortunate.
I don't know who's responsible for all of this, but I want to commend him and say thank you.
He should, all thanks, I think should, not all thanks, but a lot of thanks should go to General Henry, and I know he would be here if he could. He's extremely proud of this and worked tremendously hard on it and made it a top priority for our office.
And I say to thank you.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Ms. Webster, do you have a follow-up for Mr. Garvin?
Just a comment. I know we've talked about the break-even point on the, uh, at-large and the adding the Tulsa, Muskogee, Wagner County, and these are estimates, okay? But I estimate that could bring in another additional $2 million into revenue for those increases. So picking up those, the remainders of those.
Councilor Coats?
Yeah. Um, I, I, I differ with Counselor Garvin's assessment of this respectfully. I, I don't see, um, I think many of the at-large people in the state of Oklahoma thought that they were either going to get a break on the cost of it because I think that's what administration and the Attorney General had been, um, saying publicly is one of the things, one of the reasons for going with this, um, this mechanism for, uh, gaining car tags rather than the one that Counselor Baker and I, uh, had been sponsoring. Um, and that they were going to get a break in the cost of it in the same way that Cherokee Nation citizens in boundary have, um, a, a lower cost. That appears that that's not going to be the case. And in addition, um, our, our proposal, um, had revenue and what we estimate would be a significant amount of revenue going to, uh, funds for scholarships for at-large, and it doesn't seem that that's going to, that there's going to be any amount here, uh, generated here that will be available for anything like that to be created. If we're going to be needing, I think it says 13 to 20 additional staff, we might speculate that, you know, the less than 9% that will ultimately be forthcoming will, will be just to pay for that and, and the break-even that, that you're talking about. So, um, as a matter of pride, I can understand that at-large citizens will want to go ahead and have this tag, but, um, and, and that they'll buy it. But I want at-large citizens outside of this jurisdiction to know that there was a proposal for a different mechanism by which to do that, which would have been much more advantageous to their interests than, than it appears that this one is. And, um, so I'm, I'm, I'm quite dismayed, you know? I, I don't really understand what at-large citizens are getting out of this, uh, you know, in addition to simply buying a car tag in the same way that citizens in jurisdiction, um, have additional kinds of benefits that, that, that come to them, scholarship funding in particular. So those, those are my concerns about this. I have, um, some questions. It is the Cherokee Nation who is the government that is issuing these tags then, is that correct? Or is it the state of Oklahoma?
It will be the nation.
It is the nation. And so we are, we are issuing these tags and we're giving money back to the state when we do so. And I think that's an interesting concept for us. First of all, uh, we're required to do that on some other things, um, by federal law, I know, but, um, I, I, I'm a little disturbed by that. And are, I presume there are other agreements that we, other kinds of compacts that we have with the state where, uh, there is a waiver of sovereign immunities that the state can sue us in federal court, is that?
Yes, that provision actually came from the old, I think it came from the old tribal state tobacco compact.
Yeah, that's what I figured, and that that probably existed in tobacco. Was that the only other instance that you know of where?
I believe the gaming compact has a similar provision. I mean, I think-
But those are required under federal law, I believe, are they not? And state laws, I think the tobacco compacts are not, or?
Uh, well, the only issue with, you know, I was, I think a, it is in our interest, it could be in the nation's interest as well to have a waiver on, from the state because we're each going to be, we could, you know, widely withdraw from the compact if there was an issue, but that wouldn't get our money dislodged from the state. And so I, I, as an attorney, I like having a mechanism to go in and be made whole, to have the nation be made whole and get that money back from them. So I think that was the, just the practical, you know, reason why that was included.
It appears to me that we've got a fairly convoluted, I hate to use the word scheme, I'm trying to find some other word, but sort of a convoluted mechanism here to, to, to issue car tags to at-large citizens. And I don't see where the nation itself is, is benefiting much from it, that we're getting much out of it, except that at-large citizens on, on pride reasons are going to be able to have a tag, and certainly that's not inconsequential, but, um, but I, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, why the state would even rebate, or rebate is not the correct word, why, uh, 8.6% of revenue into general fund, even that would come back to us? And so I wanted to ask, uh, as part of the negotiation, um, were there anything about our other compacts, our gaming, our tobacco, our water camp compacts? Was there anything, uh, about those additional compacts that was used as leverage?
Absolutely not. I mean, this isn't, this was entirely about motor vehicle tags, and, um, you have to, I think you have to look at both compacts to understand the benefit to each party. And the nation is getting a tremendous benefit under the in-jurisdiction compact, adding the huge number of citizens, if you just look at the math, the demographics of the nation, adding Muskogee and Tulsa, Wagner County, and those little portions of Rogers and Mays, makes a tremendous impact to the nation's bottom line monetarily on that in-jurisdiction compact. The out-of-jurisdiction compact is not, does not, if you just looked at it alone, I could see why you might have issues with it. I think if you look at both of them together, you see that this is something that gives both parties something that they want. And I think that the nation benefits on balance a lot from entering into the, both compacts at this time. I understand opinions will differ, of course, but that, that's my, the way that I see it.
I, you know, it'll, it'll definitely going to be beneficial for those residents in three counties, in those three, or five counties, I guess it is, that, that are there. I'm just saying, I think that, that we had proposed a, a, a different way of achieving this that would have been, uh, much more beneficial to citizens everywhere, uh, throughout the state than simply those in, in those five counties. And I don't want to discount those five counties by any means because I know they will appreciate it very, very much, but, um, I, I, I think that there was a better way to do this that, that we had proposed, and, um, I, I don't, I mean, I see no scholarship benefit whatsoever to, to, unfortunately, outside of those counties. unfortunately, outside of those counties, which -- and we could have had, I think. So that's my opinion.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For your responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kessler Lake.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'm happy everybody's going to get CAR tags in Oklahoma. That will relax some of our phone calls, I think. I would like to make some comments, though. I heard several people say I wasn't there during the negotiations. Nobody contacted me. I don't know if they contacted anybody else of this council and even kept us up to date on what you guys were up to. This body needs to kind of take control of that kind of stuff. We need to set some parameters that we're the ones that are going to have to vote on this and clear it after you've done your work. Now, I see five counties left out here of the -- you got Tulsa, Wagner, Muskogee. A lot of Cherokees live there. A lot of Cherokees live in Ottawa and Osage. Chuck's going to get calls from Miami. I'm going to get calls from Pawhuska saying, "Why is my tag as high as it is if I buy a state tag?" McIntosh has called before. I don't know how many Cherokees live down there, but I'm sure there's a few. This thing seemed to be rushed. Your negotiations seemed to be rushed. I know you guys got a lot on your plate, the general's office got a lot on your plate, and I understand that. But I want you to know that I do not appreciate just throwing this down on my desk today the first time I saw it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I just have a couple of questions. One is about the industry purchase of new vehicles or purchase of vehicles. Would the at-large also get the 1.5 percent?
The at-large compacts will be at the 3.25 percent. Yeah, it'll be at the full state rate for the at-large compacts, yes. At-large.
Are we getting any of that allocation?
We're getting the 35 percent of the 25 percent, approximately 25 percent. So we'll get a cut of that. Right. And we'll get the fees that a regular tag agent would get on that, but that's it.
It's kind of hard to understand why we would do this except just for getting them a Cherokee Nation tag period, you know. The difference in the prices right now, my tag and my next-door neighbor's tag, if he's got a tag to Oklahoma, some of it, it's even. Some of them pay more, some of them pay less, you know. But the only thing that's going to help these people is that 1.5, 1.5 percent on these new vehicles. And I don't know why we didn't fight more for our people getting that tax deduction where they wouldn't have to pay as much either.
I will just say that, you know, the -- what the council ultimately decides to do with all the revenue that's brought in under the industry compact is up to this body. I mean, it's not just going to be to the county schools, but there's also other revenue brought in that goes to the nation's general fund under that. And so what this council decides to do with that is entirely up to you. And, you know, the state is well aware of how much money they make on all of those tax sales, and it was certainly, you know, this negotiation, it went on for a very long time, and all these issues were fought about hard by our office. And we didn't give away anything that we thought we could get. And, you know, I think that this is a -- of course, nobody's ever going to be completely happy with any negotiated deal, but I feel like this gave the nation a lot of revenue, it gave a lot of our citizens an opportunity to get a tag that they've never had before. It dislodged money from the state of Oklahoma's tax base and gave it to the nation that the state, you know, was not under no obligation to give us. So I think that both sides got something that they wanted out of this deal, and I am very proud of the deal that was struck, although I understand there are always going to be people that have issues with different parts of it.
Thank you. Counselor Fulbright, did you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I guess I have issue with part of what Counselor Lake said and Counselor at-large. I think the attorney general's office and their team in negotiation had a very hard job, and I really don't think that the individual council members need to dabble into the negotiations because we're dealing with the state of Oklahoma. And to me, we got a lot in return. It may not be what we wanted, but to include all of Muskogee and Tulsa and those counties that we added is going to be a lot to our bottom line. And the people that live at-large that didn't get as good a deal, we have to remember, we're negotiating with the state of Oklahoma. They didn't have to include the ones they did or change it from the way it was. So our bottom line is going to increase. It may not be what everybody wanted, but I see our job as counselors, we are going to either reject or not accept this or accept it one way or the other. I don't think we have time to go in and be a part of the negotiation team. I think that's what we have the attorney general's office for. And then they come to the table with the final product, and we can either reject it or accept it. And that's my statement. But I think overall, we're all going to be better off. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I support this, and I support the next one on our agenda. The first one is the in-jurisdiction tag, but, you know, we -- no negotiation involves one side laying down and the other side getting 100 percent. It doesn't work that way. I think this is really a breakthrough. This isn't the last CAR tag compact the Cherokee Nation will ever negotiate. There'll be another one. This is a tremendous foundation. We're now looking beyond our border, thinking beyond our border to generate revenues and to give tax for Cherokee people. You know, and the other plan, I think, involved affinity tags, which is a good way to raise money. There's lots of ways to raise money. There's lots of ways we could have the state of Oklahoma raise money for us. Frankly, I'd rather issue these tags to our people all over the state of Oklahoma, which is what we'll do. And who knows, in the next negotiation, we may get an even better deal. But we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. This is a good compact. This is a great compact. I think it's a tremendous step forward. I certainly support it. This is a -- this is an act, so we will do a roll call. Counselor Walking stick and Bird added as co-sponsors. Any other who want to be added as co-sponsors? Proceed to vote. Okay. Hargis, Fulbright, Garvin, Keener, Englund, Counselor Count Watts, anyone else? Counselor Snell? Counselor Lake? All right. All right. Proceed to the vote.
Janelle Fulbright?
Yes.
Don Garvin?
Yes.
Frankie Hargis?
Yes.
Chuck Husken Jr.?
Yes.
Tana Gory-Gory?
Yes.
Lee Keener?
Yes.
Dick Lay?
Yes.
Curtis Snell?
Yes.
David Thornton?
Yes.
David Walking stick?
Yes.
Kara Callan Watts?
Yes.
Jewel Englund?
Yes.
Jack Baker?
Yes.
Joe Bird?
Yes.
Julia Coats?
Reluctantly, yes.
Jody Fishing Hawk?
Yes.
Meredith Riley. We have 16 yes and 0 no.
Well, now we'll go on to the last on the agenda. This is the compact relating to the at-large vehicle licensing matters. We don't have any other.
Yes, this is a legislative act relating to an improving compact with the state of Oklahoma to be known as the Cherokee Nation slash State of Oklahoma at-large motor vehicle licensing act. And I would put that in form of a motion.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Fishing Hawk, do folks who want to co-sponsor the first compact one also co-sponsor this one? Okay. Go ahead and list all of those that co-sponsor, too. Any discussion? I think we've gone over this compact in the first discussion.
It's all for questions.
Questions being called. Proceed to vote. Roll call.
Byacclamation?
Byacclamation. Give us a second. All right. Good byacclamation. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. The meeting is August 29th at 1:00 p.m. You entertain a motion to adjourn. One second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have food here, I believe.
We'll try to kick this back off about 12:00, 25:00. You guys are still getting into my time. I moved my meeting up two hours, and you're still getting into it, so.